Good evening. It's seven o'clock and we have a special meeting of the Urbana City Council that will be followed by a public hearing on some liquor licenses and then the regular meeting of the council's committee of the whole, which will be chaired by Dennis Roberts. So I'd like to call the special meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. We have a new form for somebody who would like to testify. Instead of having one for each type of meeting, you can just check off if you want the city council, Cunningham Township, committee of the whole, or the public hearing. That was redesigned by the city clerk's office. Phyllis Clark is the city clerk. So, thank you, Phyllis.
Good job.
Is there anyone who would like to address the special meeting of the Urbana City Council? I don't have any forms filled out. Okay, if there's no one here, I need to read a proclamation. Whereas there are 400 farmers' markets in the state of Illinois and farmers' markets are important outlets for agricultural producers nationwide, providing them with increased marketing opportunities, and whereas Urbana's Market at the Square has been part of Urbana for 37 years and plays a key role in developing local and regional food systems that support local farmers and businesses and supports economic development in our community, and whereas thousands of farmers' markets across the country offer consumers fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthful products sold directly from the farm, and whereas farmers' markets, including Urbana's Market at the Square, increasingly offer electronic benefits transfer technology for use by Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program recipients in redeeming their benefits and also offer opportunities for low-income women, infants, and children, and seniors participating in the WIC and Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Programs, respectively, to redeem their benefits. Now, therefore, to further awareness of farmers' markets and of the many important contributions farmers make to daily life in America, I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim the week of August 7th to 13th, 2016, as National Farmers Market Week in the City of Urbana, and I encourage the people of Urbana to celebrate the benefits of farmers' markets and the bountiful production of our local farmers with appropriate observances and activities. Okay, we'll move on. The first item is the ordinance number 2016-08-060, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Lacy's Place LLC, 110 East University Avenue.
That was a report from the special committee.
Oh, it's not listed that way on the agenda, but let's have the committee of the whole give the report.
Okay.
Bill Brown?
The committee of the whole met last week in a special session and forwarded several items to council all with recommendation for approval. First was ordinance number 2016-08-060, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Lacy's Place LLC, 110 East University Avenue. For the committee, I move approval. Second?
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Diane?
Yes, I got a call from a constituent this morning and I told him I'd pass along his comments. He's been increasingly concerned about the number of gaming establishments in the city, and he expressed concern specifically about the potential for gambling addiction and the adverse impact on individuals and families that can occur from this. And so he wasn't opposed to any particular one that we're considering here, but he is becoming concerned about the overall numbers. So I wanted to make sure, and it was from Mr. Glenn Huff, and I told him I would pass along his comments for the record.
Okay, anyone else? Eric?
So this, these items on the agenda drove me back to the research to see if there was anything that I had overlooked before. And, you know, I actually share Diane's correspondence gut concern about this. It seems like a potential problem. I just can't find any evidence in the literature. What I'm seeing is that there has not been an increase in gambling addiction over the last decade or so. There's been a tremendous increase in gambling opportunities because of the internet. And so internet gambling has taken a significant share of the total gambling dollar, but the total dollar hasn't increased. So I just, I could not find a rational reason to oppose these licenses. And especially, I mean, as far as I can tell, there's going to be a certain amount of gambling revenue in the society, in our region, and we're just getting our share.
Bill, and then Dennis?
First on these two tonight, I stopped by and checked out these two today, and neither one of them are posted in our required signages, so that's probably enough reason to vote no for it. We passed the ordinance a year and a half ago almost that requires certain signs to be posted in English and in Spanish, so I'd just like to see that enforced. I don't know if these two are the only ones that haven't posted. I suspect that most of them-
They don't have a license yet, so when they do-
Well, they were operating, so.
Oh.
I-
Okay.
These two tonight have been operating for several years.
This is under new ownership. Well, okay, well, that's something that's easily fixed.
Okay, so-
They'll be required to put the signs up.
Yeah, I asked that be enforced for all of them. However, that's done.
Have you looked at all of them, or just-
I haven't looked at all of them. I can if you want me to.
Okay, well, we can, also, Jolinda can look, too.
Okay, whoever's supposed to enforce that should probably do it. Then I just have another comment for Eric, toward Eric's comments. I don't know if it's actually being assessed, so I'm not sure how you, I'm not sure which studies you've looked at. I've looked at other studies that do show increases of gambling addiction in areas where there's new gambling opportunities. But locally, I know that's not being assessed, and I've even asked the sheriff if they could include it on their assessment forms and their intake forms, and so far, there hasn't been any inclination to do that, either at the county level or through community elements, success or whatever they are now. So I encourage people to look at assessment opportunities for problem gambling, because we don't really know until we assess it whether it's increasing.
Okay, Dennis?
Well, I want to weigh in on the idea of the G2 licenses and converting G1s to G2 as well. I'm really ready to cap the G2 license dispersal in Urbana after this evening. If we pass the three licenses tonight, we're going to have a gaming hall available, which would become a G2, for every 4,583 residents of Urbana, because we'll have nine of them, and we have 41,250 residents. So this is about the size of a really large high school. So you've got one gaming hall for every group of people. That's about 4,500. So it's interesting to note that these do not really bring down much actual revenue into the city compared to what is siphoned off by the state for income. And it's been our experience so far that most businessmen who apply for a G1 license only pretend to run a restaurant that serves food, and that within six months, by determination of their actual revenue stream, they've become basically identified as a gaming hall rather than a restaurant, which requires the G2 license. So we've come back to have people request now for the G2 licenses, which, you know, is pretty much appropriate for the actual activity that's taking place in their establishments. So this is an easy way for a businessman to create profit without providing tangible value into the community itself. The gaming machines, my impression was that allowing gaming and creating the G1 license was intended to help organizations who actually do run facilities that supply food and beverages to the community, like the VFW Post, because they need assistance financially to maintain their organizations. So the habit of gaming is not one that I see my constituents being very supportive of. I mean, I've certainly had quite a few people stop me in the street saying that they have a concern and they appreciate my interest in capping the gaming licenses in this town. And I don't see this as really being a direction that the City of Urbana really wants to support or chooses to support. So after tonight, I think that we really need to have a conversation in the city council about how much is enough. Thank you.
I would like to clarify that we do have a limit, because we have limited the geographical distance and the areas in which we can have G2 licenses. And so we, right now, have a much lower per capita than the City of Champaign, which has no limits, and we have a far lower amount than the City of Springfield, for example. So we do have limits. Now, if you want to, you know, further lower the limit by an actual number rather than just the geographic, we can certainly have a conversation, but I don't want people to think that we don't have a limit, because we do. And the other thing is that gambling was going on in this community and all communities when it was illegal. It was not stopped by being illegal, but it was certainly not taxed or regulated. So I don't think that making it legal has made the gambling problem worse. It's sort of like alcohol. Alcohol can be misused and people can become addicted to it as well, but our great experiment in banning it was a complete failure, and what it did was increase crime. So I think that the better thing is to have it be regulated and taxed, because you're not going to get people to stop gambling or to stop drinking alcohol.
Can I respond?
I'm sure.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, we already allow quite a few gambling, we've already got nine, we're going to be having nine gaming halls in the city by the end of today, probably, and there are several other G1 licenses that we have. So we're not limiting or we haven't prevented gaming from happening. My question is, what's useful to the city and what's appropriate for Urbana? And it may not be what's appropriate for a lot of other places, but I've had many people come to me and say that they're concerned, just like Diane Marlin has read a letter. And yeah, you might, we can have a conversation about whether that means anything to us, whether it's more important for the city to have a revenue stream and to be allowing these G1 and G2 licenses, or do we decide that we've got quite a few right now and we're pretty happy? And so we don't have to, we don't have to approve every single one that comes to us, and that's what I'm suggesting.
Eric?
I'm really concerned with what Bill has said about the required signage not being there. The signage was specifically designed to alert people to the issue of gambling addiction and to provide them with a link or connection where they could get help or get consulting on that. And certainly, my, my vote for the ordinance was actually predicated on that. If we hadn't had that, I probably wouldn't have voted for the ordinance enabling this. So I guess I would, I guess before I, and especially if we're voting for, you know, change of ownership for an ongoing establishment that hasn't posted, that bothers me a lot. And I guess I'd like to know how that's going to get fixed.
Well, I certainly will go to them tomorrow and make sure that they get the signs. I was not aware that they didn't have the signs, so I don't gamble, so I haven't been in. I haven't heard from anyone up until now that there were no signs, but if there aren't no signs, we will get the signs up, because that, they can't get the license without having the sign.
Okay. Can we, I don't know what, I don't know what to suggest about tonight's procedure.
Well, we won't give them the license if they don't have the sign. If they're not complying with the ordinance, they won't get the license.
Okay, so our vote tonight, if we vote tonight-
Will be contingent, yeah.
Will, it'll, in effect, be contingent.
Right.
I'd have to go back and look at the ordinance. What are the penalties for not having the sign?
I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Kurt, do you have access to it?
I can go get it.
I think it, yeah.
Yeah, let's get some teeth into that provision.
Did you want to say something, Charlie?
Yeah, while, while he's going to get the information, a couple of things that come to mind is we should include information about the signage in our annual renewal, license renewal for G1 and G2. I think it's probably time to look at the revenues coming in from our combined G1 and G2. And, you know, one of the things that concerns me is when they level off, and, you know, at some point, if they level off, then we really don't want more, because it's just going to take away from, from the others. We want to keep the, I think, we want to keep the establishments healthy. It's also good to look at G1 versus G2, given that G1 is a restaurant level. And then I'd also like to look again at the geographical distribution of G1s and G2s. I know we've got that GIS map and like to get that updated, because we've added a few at geographical, geographic points that did not have a gaming hall in the past. So I'd like to see the G1 versus G2 geographically as well. So I think those are all.
Well, we've been very careful about measuring to make sure that two establishments don't violate that ordinance.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So that's been done before we even bring you the ordinance.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, like, we turned down one license because it was too close to residential, too much part of a residential neighborhood, not appropriate zoning, but we allowed one further north.
It was appropriate zoning.
Well, no.
But the neighborhood didn't want it.
No, it didn't, no, it was a B1. They wanted it changed to B3. They wouldn't have needed a B3 license.
Oh, we're talking about a different one. I'm talking about Washington.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm talking about the North Lincoln one, where we turned one down, but then we approved one further north in a location that was more appropriate and was a B3 zone property already. So that's what I'm saying, is that's the kind of geographical location stuff that I-
That one's coming up-
Right, yeah.
Later tonight.
Well, that's yet another one. That's in another, that's on North Cunningham. Again, another geographical location away from, from, from others and towards a neighborhood that doesn't have a gaming hall as it currently stands. And while Kurt's off doing that, can we suspend this and move on to, like, the two bottom ordinances?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Aaron, go ahead.
The geographical proximity question or concern, I don't know the exact distance, and we're talking about G2s to G2s, right? Was it G2 and G1? Is it all mixed together?
I think it was G2 and G1 and G2s and G2s. It's limiting the number of G2s.
So, in actuality, the language of proximity may suggest to someone that there's a real concern being taken as to how close they are together. And that was based upon compete, competition, business competition? Is that what the geographic distance is about?
I think it was based on the fact that we took a middle ground. Some communities banned gambling completely, and others just let it be. And my suggestion to this council, which you agreed to, was that we take a middle ground and we allow gambling, but we limit the amount of establishments. And we did that by considering zoning and then coming up with these numbers, like 500 feet, you know, so we have effectively limited the amount of these establishments that can be built in Urbana.
Well, the reason why I raised the question is because in my ward and then right on the edge of my ward, we're talking about University and Race, there's a new establishment being built that I'm under the impression will also seek to have a G2 license. I could be wrong. Lacy's, Four Points, and also next door to L Oasis is one. And then you have one in the Schnucks area. So, you know, we talk about that it's, you know, 500 feet, but there's still a cluster of them in relative close proximity to one another.
Well, I can tell you that the people who are building the one on West University have spent $200,000 to completely redo, tear down the old building and redo and put a new building in, and it's in a business area. It's not right next to residences. So-
Well, I, I'm perplexed as to what the $200,000 that they spent has to do with the point that I'm making, but-
I'm talking about the business side of this, that people have invested a huge amount of money into this business, and they've come this far. And I think if you want to talk about limiting it after tonight, I, you know, I'm certainly open to that, but I don't think it's fair to someone who has spent a year developing the business to suddenly not support them in doing that when we have had an ordinance that they followed.
So I'm not, I haven't suggested that I was not going to support it or whether I was going to support it. The point that I was trying to make, or just raise the point about proximity, is that, again, 110 University, Lacy's Place, L Oasis, Schnucks, they're all right there together. So I'm, I don't know what exactly does our ordinance about geography or distance geographically really have to do with anything.
Well, if you want to change it, I mean, you could make it more than 500 feet, but I, you know, if we've had an ordinance in place and people are making business decisions on that, I don't think it's fair to cut those people off. But if you want to limit it from now on, I mean, that's up to the council. Bill?
I think one of the original intents of the 500 feet was to make sure that, like, one strip mall couldn't get two or three gaming operations and basically turn into a casino that would have, you know, door next to door, next to door with gaming operations. I think it was, we did kind of go back and forth a little bit on what distances and how you measure those distances and 500 feet's what we came up with, but.
I don't know. You can throw a rock from 110 East University across to L Oasis to Lacy's Place to wherever this is. I forget what the one is, at Schnucks.
Emma's Place.
Emma's Place. So I'm, hey, look, I'm just raising the point that there's a cluster of them in a particular area. I don't know, do we have any embarrassed commons or any places like that?
We don't have them in residential areas.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah. Okay, did you have, did you find the answer to the question, Kurt?
Yes, I did. Section 343 of the Urbana City Code requires the posting of the sign that, that we've been discussing. Elsewhere in the liquor code, Section 3-48 provides that the mayor may revoke or suspend any retail liquor license or impose a fine for any violation of any provision of the Urbana City Code or violation of state law. So any potential, any violation of the liquor code is potentially subject to a fine, a suspension, or a revocation. And Section 1-10 of the City Code provides that where a, where a fine is not specifically mentioned in a statute, the fine can be not less than $1 nor more than $750 for each offense. And every day of a violation would be construed as a, as a new offense.
Okay, any questions on that? Eric?
Yeah, so I would request that, that city staff visit these places, ascertain whether or not the signs are there, and give notice that the signs must be put in place promptly or there are consequences.
Yes.
And then report back that this got done. I think that-
I will report next week to you.
Okay, terrific.
Or send you an email tomorrow. Diane?
Well, I assume when they get their license, the city notifies them that, of the language that has to be posted, and do we provide a copy of the sign or a PDF that they can print out and post?
I think that, I think the sign is state law, but certainly if we're not telling them exactly what it is, we should do that.
That, yeah.
Because they have to get a state license before they get the city license. The city is following the state law on signs, correct?
The sign is a unique provision of our City Code. It's not required under the state law. My understanding from previous dealings is that when the finance department issues the license, they also provide the, a copy of what needs to be posted, and they explain where it needs to be and so forth.
Okay, because I do think the state law required the anti-gambling assistance be posted, but we'll, we could check that out.
Okay.
But anyway, before anybody gets a license, they're going to have the signs, okay? There was a motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Which motion are we on?
We're on the motion for ordinance number 2016-08-060. Okay. And this is for Lacy's Place, 110 East University Avenue.
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Bill?
Next is ordinance number 2016-08-061, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 343, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Hot Spot Restaurant LLC, 1809 South Phila Road. For the committee, I move approval.
Second?
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Diane?
Just want to make sure the public knows that this is not a new license. This is a currently existing establishment with a change of ownership who are getting a new license.
And so was the previous one.
And the previous one as well.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2016-08-062, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2016, 2017, for market grants. For the committee, I move approval.
Second?
And this is an ordinance that you received a correction a week ago?
Market grants.
Okay, so Natalie Kenny Marquez is here to talk about that.
Yeah, I passed out the, I passed out the correction last Monday evening.
Yeah. Okay, do you want to talk about it? Anything about the ordinance or not?
There wasn't really a lot of discussion last week. I could just say the program has been very successful. July was our best month yet, and this past Saturday, we actually distributed just shy of $1,800 in SNAP, in SNAP double values, our best market to date ever.
Natalie's been doing a fantastic job, and we have one of the best farmers' markets in Illinois.
In the world.
In the world.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, is there, did you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Charlie seconded.
Motion?
Aaron.
Oh, Aaron seconded. Motion by Brown, seconded by Ammons on the ordinance for the market grants. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And we have resolution number 2016-08-048R, a resolution authorizing entering into an execution of a Linkup Illinois Double Value Coupon Program grant agreement. For the committee, I move approval.
Second?
Motion by Brown, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. There being no further business, this special meeting of the Urbana City Council is adjourned. Next is the public hearing. I'd like to call that to order. This is a public hearing on some liquor licenses that are gambling licenses. We may have more discussion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor pressing. Here. Is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? This is a comment on three ordinances. One of them is for Emma's Eatery to change that from a G1 to a G2. It's owned by Blackhawk Restaurant Group, but we've determined that they really are more of a G2 than a G1. And then we have two new ones, Lindy Lou's at 202 West University Avenue and Lucky Luke's at 1504 North Cunningham Avenue. So, is there anyone who would like to testify on any of these ordinances to create licenses, G2 licenses? Okay, take a seat and please talk into the microphone and tell us your name and your business.
Sure. My name's Carl Minch. I represent Mala LLC. We have Lindy Lou's Place, 202 West University. I'm also president of Speedlube. We have been in operation in Urbana for over 25 years. We've ran a business steadily, good business, looked to expand, do something a little bit different. And in Decatur, we have chosen to go into the gaming business. Came here, I'm here several times a week, but came here and had the idea of trying to find a location probably a year and a half ago. Looked and looked and looked. Found different locations, wasn't always easy to get. The locations that I wanted wouldn't always meet zoning. From our point of view, it wasn't easy to find a location that we wanted. Like I said, we looked and we looked and we looked, finally found a great location on the corner of Race and University. It was kind of a old dilapidated building and I feel that we have made that, that whole area much, much better than it ever has been. We're going to have, of course, a gaming facility there. We're going to have some office space there. And we've made a significant investment there, not only in time, but just in monetary. We're going to close the approach there that was, that was dangerous to oncoming traffic. We, we're going to help increase property taxes just because of the investment. The gambling returns to the municipality will increase. And it's just a much, much better facility and much nicer than what was there before. And from my point of view, that was not going to change. We had difficulty buying the property and I think probably everybody remembers or knows something about that. The owners that did have it, I don't think had any intention of doing anything different with that. It was going to remain that, one way or another. We have improved it and we have a good relationship with the surrounding people, the neighbors to the south. We had some issues at one of the hearings. We addressed those. We took care of it. We have a good relationship. Have not had any other complaints, any other questions from any other people that I'm aware of publicly. We've had a good relationship with the city of Urbana. We've had a great relationship with planning and development. Everything's went very well. We've had some, some issues with development. We followed everything that we needed to. We've made a great building that is everything that the city has asked. And with that, we just ask that everybody vote in favor of us getting a liquor license this evening or voting towards that for next week. And really, that's all I have to say.
Any questions from the council? Well, I think the building does look much better. The new building is a huge improvement over the old one.
Yeah.
So, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Aaron?
So, early on, my comments, I'm sure you heard me question the mayor about the relevance of the amount of money towards my question. It was not meant to be offensive to any business owners who are investing their time and energy into our, into our city. It was, it was meant in a different vein. So, I thank you for the, what you've brought to, to the community and the efforts that you've made and the money that you've spent. But I'm sure you are aware of the complexities and sensitivities of this issue.
I am.
So, but just didn't mean to offend anyone.
No, no.
In that regard, I just wanted to say that to you.
Likewise, thank you.
Dennis?
And could you share with council, you said that you'd have business offices in the building. So, are you going to have like actually two different uses of occupation?
There will be another use in there. As of yet, no idea. We haven't even put it to market yet.
Okay, so it's not going to be your personal business office. It's going to be some other?
Correct.
Business, you think, retail or something?
Right. There's no plan for it currently, except to lease it out.
All right, thank you.
To a professional office, you know, it'd be perfect for a law office or an insurance agent, who knows?
Well, I can appreciate the fact that you're at least bringing more than one item into the community. Thank you.
Eric?
I wonder if you'd be willing to share for the public what attracted you to that particular location? What prompted you to, to invest in our city, which we're very happy about?
Well, we have been here for a long time and we like the city of Urbana. We've, we've done well here changing oil and ideally, it would have been nice to be somewhere on Cunningham. To be honest with you, it wasn't easy finding a property. It wasn't. With the zoning restrictions, I looked and looked and looked, approached many different places and it just wouldn't fit. Was that the absolute first place we picked? I don't think it was, but it's one that worked and actually, I think it's the best. Over time, I've fallen in love with it and I think it's a great place. It has great traffic and I think it's going to be a nice little facility. The traffic in front of it is good and I think it's great.
Okay.
And one thing that we did do differently is that not only do we have the facility, but we, we have the building and the property. That's not always the case. That's, that's something else that we have done and we chose to do. We don't just lease a space, but we own the building, the property, and the business.
And you also got, and this council did approve changing the entryway so it would be more safe for cars entering and leaving.
Yeah.
Charlie?
I was going to save my comments for later, but I might as well put them out here now. The, you know, this particular facility, we knew was coming and we knew what it was for and everything, which we were very upfront about earlier. But I'd like to point out now that we have three of the four corners, three of the four corners of that intersection now, two have new buildings, the other one is a reopened restaurant, and the fourth property is for sale. It's a much bigger piece of property and potentially now with two attractive buildings there and a restaurant across the street, you know, there's a good, a good chance we can do something in that fourth corner of some substance. It's a much bigger piece of property and.
On the other corner of Race?
Right, yeah, opposite, directly south of you. I think you were talking about your neighbors to the north before.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, and it's across the street to your south.
To the south.
That, that there's four or six lots as part of that.
It's a big property.
Right, yeah, it's a big property that's available and, and that's something that, you know, would be really, you know, as a cluster and if, you know, you've basically nailed down a second part of that intersection. We have one more corner to do and everything that gets built helps generate interest in building more there. So, I think from that perspective, I welcome you and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this hearing? Okay, if there's no one else that would like to speak, then I will close the hearing. Thank you very much.